Hello, welcome to this wonderful American Fork, a local school board debate that we have here. We're so glad that you're here and I have to say that I love this school. My name is Cindy Davis and I was principal here at Shelley Elementary School many, many years ago and part of my heart is still here, so I am thrilled to be here tonight talking with you and our great candidates about the importance of education and the issues that are on a lot of people's minds. And if you don't mind, we're all going to sit. We have a small group today and so we'll be sitting and making this a little bit less formal, but thank you again for coming. So, as you know, this election is especially significant because we are laying the foundation for a grand new school district. The board members elected this fall will help set the vision, priorities, and direction for the future of the Aspen Peaks area. Each candidate will begin with up to three minutes for an opening introduction to get to know them, their qualifications, and what they hope for the future of the district. Following that, candidates will respond to submitted questions with a limit of two minutes per response and you don't have to take that much time if you don't want to. Brevity is best in many cases, right? To keep things fair, we will alternate which candidate answers first on each question. At the end of the evening, each candidate will have up to 90 seconds to share a closing statement. Our timekeeper, seen on the front row, thank you, will help candidates stay on track. A yellow card will be raised when 30 seconds remain and a red card will be raised when time has expired. To foster constructive dialogue, we've encouraged candidates to focus on policy, ideas, and priorities rather than personal attacks or labeling others. I have a feeling this is not going to be a problem tonight. We also ask the audience, lucky American Fork, I must say, we also ask the audience to remain attentive and refrain from cheering, clapping, or other interruptions during the Q&amp;A portion. At the conclusion of the evening, we invite you to join us in a round of applause for the candidates. Thank you for helping us create a thoughtful and respectful discussion and with that, we're going to begin. Okay. Our very first opportunity to get to know each of you is going to be your three-minute introduction. And Stephanie Sincerson, closest to me, can we have you start? And then on closing statements, we will have Jason start.
So, good evening. My name is Stephanie Jones and I am running for the Aspen Peaks School Board, seat seven. I'm grateful for you being here tonight and that you are engaged in this process. This is not something that I will do, Jason will do, or even the seven members of the board will do. I thought I lost my pen, sorry. But this is really a community endeavor, so I invite you to join with us as we create this new school district. Can you believe it is two weeks away and it begins? So tonight, I'd like to introduce myself just briefly and some of the experiences in my life that I feel like qualified me for this position. I hope by the end of the evening, I will have answered your questions, showing why I'm qualified to sit around the board and that you will consider voting for me. I've always loved school and I was especially inspired in high school. I had a wonderful debate teacher, Mr. Henry, who taught me to do research, to look at both sides of an issue, to get good information, and to keep an open mind. Mr. Barfus guided me through being editor of the school newspaper where he talked about being honest with our communication. Both of those inspired me. I went on to BYU and got a bachelor's degree in speech communication and journalism. Another event in my life that has transformed me is being a mother, a wife, and a grandmother and this has had a huge impact on me. I have three children who went through the Alpine School District and I have nine grandchildren. Six of them will attend school in Aspen Peaks. But on a daily basis, I watch my grandchildren and see how teachers of school shape their confidence and their curiosity. I went on to earn some advanced degrees. I have a master's in library science and a doctorate in education. From those experiences, I learned hard work and perseverance and opportunity. That is my hope for the students in our high school district, that their education will bring them joy, that it will show them that hard work pays off, and that they will see the opportunities and the doors open. My professional experience started as an eighth-grade English teacher in Provost School District at Fairer Junior High. I taught eighth grade English and I was not sure I was going to survive to the end of the year. Gratefully, I had a good department head and a great mentor and I made it and I even went back the next year. In some ways, I feel like I never loved junior high. I was at Canyon View Junior High in Orin and I was at American Fork Junior High for 16 years and enjoyed my time there. On a positive note, I love Attic Green Gables and the good earth. So I just wanted to end with that since I'm a librarian. They both remind me that resilience and a sense of belonging can change a life, which to me is exactly what schools are meant to do.
Thanks, Emily. So my name is Jason Beal and I, my daughter, went to this school. My two sons went to Highland. They were in the ALL program. My daughter's like, "No, I want to be with friends." So she came here and was here at Shelley Elementary and all three of my kids went on to go to AF Junior and benefited because all, well, two of the three are big bookworms. So they spent quite a bit of time in Stephanie's realm there at AF Junior and then all three went on to graduate from American Fork High School and had a great experience and all three had been down for French and enjoyed it. And when we had saved up enough money to do a big trip, guess where they went to go? France. So that's where we went for our first big trip abroad as a family was to France. So I had 28 years in public education and one year at BYU now, so 29 years total. I went to BYU, got a degree in elementary education, started teaching at Northridge Elementary in Orin, taught there for fifth and sixth grade there for six years. And after my principal who was there, he went to a new school and he said, "Jason, come be my assistant principal." Now, at the time, it was called a TSA, a Teacher on Special Assignment, which basically meant you acted like an assistant principal when you just got paid like a teacher. So he said, "Come be my TSA at this school I'm going to." So I went with him and over the course of the three years there as a TSA, I kind of was like, "This is kind of nice, being able to influence an entire school and spread positivity and goodness and encouragement and excitement for 35 teachers and 800 kids." And so Carl, my principal, said, "You need to go get a master's." I already had a master's in teaching, so then I went back about a master's in administration and then was immediately hired to be the principal at Lyndon Elementary. And I was the principal there for six years and it was marvelous. What a great little spot of Utah County. I was principal there at Lyndon Elementary. I must have done okay there because they asked you to open a brand-new school. And so I had the experience of from scratch opening a brand-new school out in Saratoga Springs called Thunder Ridge and that was an adventure. My wife would tell you that my sleepy habits still haven't fully recovered from running Lyndon Elementary while opening Thunder Ridge Elementary. At the Thunder Ridge, I had the chance to be the principal at Northridge again where I taught. I got to go back and then be the principal there for a couple of years. At that point, the district said, "Jason, come be our director of student services." And I can talk more about some of the things I learned there. And then last year, BYU said, "Jason, we have a program where we're teaching principals how to be better principals. We want you to come and help run that program." So that's a little bit about my education background. Will I go first on this one?
Yes, you will. This question was submitted by one of our guests here tonight. One of the new school board's early crucial decisions will be choosing a new superintendent. How will you approach this, and a business administrator, I will add? What are you looking for? Are there any red flags that you'll be watching out for?
So that's a good question. So I've got to work with some good superintendents and the current superintendent, Rob Smith, once told me, he said, "Jason, you can have anything you want, just not everything you want." And that's, there's some life lessons there, right? And what are your priorities? So I would say, as you prioritize a superintendent, my top priority would be I want a superintendent that is curious. Someone that wants to learn, wants to get into the research, wants to visit other districts, wants to go to conferences, wants to learn, wants to talk, engage with parents, wants to engage with teacher leaders. Learn, 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 and then get with the team and say, "All right, this is what we've learned. What did you learn? This is what I learned. Here's some things that we can do moving forward. Let's see how this might help our students in our district." So that's probably one of the most important things, is a record of curiosity and innovation and trying things and seeing what works. And then I'd say the second thing is someone who understands you have to balance our needs right now with our needs in the future. And don't mortgage the future because you're only thinking about today, but also don't be paralyzed by the future that you don't get after it right now. So those would be two of the big things that I would want to see in a superintendent. And then for a business administrator, I would want someone that is, these are the numbers. This is the transparent truth about how much this is going to cost, how much this is going to cost. If you share as a board and as a superintendent and as a, you know, like a distributor team, these are your priorities, I will dig and dig and figure and figure and calculate until I can come up with this as a plan.
Hiring a new superintendent and the business administrator is a key responsibility of the new school board and will be something that is tackled fairly soon after being sworn in. Such an important relationship that will be started there. I would look for an administrator, and I want to say I believe in a very broad search. It is now our chance to look as broadly as we can, look for someone who has a track record of innovation, of research, of solving hard problems. But that has to be balanced with someone who understands our unique culture, finances in Utah, and the way we find education is a little bit daunting. So having that balance of someone who may have a vision or sees things a little bit differently than we do because they haven't been entrenched in this culture while understanding their culture. I think I'm describing somebody that may not exist, but we will try. We will look for them. I want someone who will listen. I want someone who will come and wants to learn about us, wants to learn about the dreams and aspirations of the teachers and parents in Aspen Peaks. So at first, I want someone who is more willing to listen than to talk. I also want someone who is a good communicator. So often, the vision or how we move forward needs to be communicated clearly and so I want someone who can do that. The business administrator, I want someone who can help me track the expenses so that if we vote to fund something, we know what we are funding and we know how to measure if we have been successful. There needs to be a line between what I'm willing to pay my money for and what outcome I'm hoping to achieve and how do I know if I achieved it?
Speaking of money, let's talk about taxes. AST has approved some property tax increases over the past several years. If elected, how would you approach decisions on property tax increases for the new district? And under what circumstances, if any, would you support them?
This is always a really hard topic and a little bit messy. As I attended the Truth in Taxation meeting several weeks ago throughout Pine School District and there was some back and forth, it was ultimately voted to increase one net increment. I think the first problem is it's very difficult to communicate to our public how we are funded, what this all means, what it means on their statement that they get from the county. And so it's just messy. I believe, I would have supported, I will be transparent and honest, I would have supported the vote to increase the one net increment. I think it would be critical for there to be the capital to move forward and prepare. But there were a lot of people there who felt very strongly and mentioned numerous times, I believe, that the school board, current school board, has raised taxes seven times in the last eight years. I understand their frustration and I understand that it has not always been clearly communicated as to why. It hasn't always been clearly understood. So in deliberating about whether or not I would vote to continue to raise taxes, I would want it to be crystal clear to all parties why we are doing it and there are several reasons why. I would do it to retain good teachers. I would do it, I would vote to increase taxes to provide safety for our students. But I want to say, I would only agree to those after there had been a really thorough investigation on where our resources were going, our funds, is there anywhere else? I don't believe we have a blame check. I believe we have a responsibility to our constituents, but also our students and I hope going forward, we can make this process a little bit clearer, better understood, and show the steps we have taken to scrutinize our spending.
I agree with everything Stephanie just said. We actually were at that same meeting together. We'll talk a little bit about it afterwards. And I think, I think the decision they arrived at was an important one. I just think that it could have been more conversation about this is exactly how we got to this point. And that's, afterwards, I kind of went on to my little Facebook page and I said, "You know what? I don't know if they should have come to a different decision, but they should have been a little bit more open and transparent about this is why we're doing what we're doing." So the matter, I didn't think was problematic and the ultimate decision they made, man, that would have been nice. Even as someone who kind of has more background into how and what those funds would have done, it would have been nice to just say, "We're going to bore you guys for a minute if that's what it takes, but we're going to talk out loud. This is why we're doing what we're doing. This is what the, exactly where the money's coming from and where it's going to go." And so Stephanie and I kind of talked a little bit about that. One of the things that we both hope would happen in this future board is if we have to make tough decisions, let's at least explain in as plain terms as we can, this is why we did what we did. I love how Stephanie talked about taxes may need to be raised, but only after we've demonstrated a level of scrutiny that our patrons deserve. And if we've been able to meet that level of scrutiny, that this is what we looked at, this is what we, these are the options that we have. If we do this, this is what will happen. And then get feedback from our patrons and they can sense the true level of scrutiny that we've gone through. And our community supports that when those decisions can be made in the light of day and not in a rush or not quickly and then just all in favor. So I think that could have been a little more helpful. So the decision they arrived at was a good one, I think, but let's just talk about it a little more so people are interested.
Thank you. In my 4:00 a.m. moments of insomnia this morning, I was literally writing out my thoughts about property taxes. This is what I do at 4:00.
And just, we both had this conversation too is, and Stephanie actually wrote a really good blog post. If you go to her website, she had written a really good blog post that kind of explains our legislature has reduced taxes significantly over the last two twenty years and instead told the school boards, "We're going to grant you authority to add increments to your property taxes." So then who has to go in front of everyone to raise taxes? The school board does. Now, we all love having less income tax. I get that, right? But it didn't go away. They just made school board members go forward to keep our funding similar. And we're now the ones that have to go. And so I recommend you go see Stephanie's blog post. She's did a really good job of making it simple and straightforward.
We're going rogue. Do you want time too?
I'll just say, thank you, Jason, for the slides. The only thing I would say is on that blog post, I also tried to list kind of my watch list because there are a lot of things right now before the Utah State Legislature that will only serve to make the problem worse. So I think we're pretty much in agreement because I think if you want a little more information and there's kind of a watch list that I'm watching.
Thank you. Here is another question that was submitted by someone in this audience tonight. What is your view of school choice?
That's a great question. So when I became the principal at Lyndon, very first, I mean rookie principal, a charter school had opened the year before, like a block down the street and they had lost quite a few of their students to that, to that school. And so I kind of have that firsthand experience. I have two neighbors in my neighborhood, I love the door, that are on charter school boards, right? And so what I tell people over and over is two things about charter schools, well, maybe three. One, competition is good for us. We have had to, as a public school system, we've had to think about some things to refine and improve our game because of that competition. So we should, you know, so competition can be good. Number two, if your child goes to a school that treats them with love and respect and communicates well with you, that's a good school. That's a good school regardless of how it might be categorized. If they are good to your kids and they communicate well with you, that's a good school and I hope you have a great time. Third thing about charter schools is sometimes what frustrates us is it's not always apples to apples. There are things that public schools, for lack of a better word, are required to offer that are sometimes optional in some charter school settings and that's not right. That's not right. So if you're going to put us together, then have it be apples to apples and have it be a level playing field. So just to sum up, I'm not scared of competition. I think it can be good for us. And if you love your school, just fight for it if it's treating your kids right. But let's try to have things be on a level playing field.
I am so tired. Can you repeat the question?
What is your view of school choice?
So I agree with Jason. I think parents should have choice and I am grateful that there are opportunities out there for parents to explore some of those opportunities. However, I feel very strongly, as a school board member, my job is to defend and advocate for public schools. That means to me that if you choose to homeschool, if you choose to go to get a voucher, the Utah Fit Scholarship, if you decide to go to a charter school because that fits best for your child, I support you wholeheartedly, but that is an investment then that that family will have to make on their time. I do not support the Utah State Legislature then diverting those funds away from public schools.
Thank you. Speaking of funds.
Lots of money.
Good sad ways.
Lots of money questions.
Over a decade ago, we observed a large district split and it was very complex. As we're experiencing, one of the points of debate and sometimes contention was around resources. During the transition phase over the next year and a half, what steps will you take to build productive negotiations with the other school districts to share resources and services, which all boils down to funds?
So I have been very impressed with the candidates in the other school districts and just through different events, there's always, already been kind of a natural building of relationships, conversations that have been going on. So I have no doubt that the three boards will continue to have conversations. They'll continue to talk productively about the strength of one district versus the weakness of another district. How can we help each other out? And those can be physical assets, busing, a special ed school, because we understand those needs are for all students. One thing that has, I've had several schools reach out to me are back school boundaries. If you go to Barrett or Van Deerfield or the boundary between American Fork and Pleasant Grove, I tried to walk it the other way and I don't know, someone will have to figure it out for me. But there will have to be conversations about what works best for those students and those schools and the school board will have some way to be able to do that. Gratefully, I think the state legislature learned a lot from the Canyons and Jordan split and have put certain safeguards in place that I don't know that it will be quite as contentious. And I guess another thought I have is there's more than just physical resources. I had a conversation tonight about negotiating and some of the things that we might be able to do is share professional development, allow singletons. If you're the only librarian in a school, it'd be nice to be able to collaborate with someone nearby. So being able to cross boundaries and expand those borders and those supports for teachers, I don't think it has to be a rigid line. So I think we're well positioned for productive, rational conversations to make sure all three districts move forward successfully.
Yeah, well said. I, on multiple occasions as a principal, I had a chance to work with other principals. Right now, I was in elementary, so we didn't have Sky Ridge versus AF, you know, some of those are kind of things going. We all just love being with each other and trying to learn from each other. So on multiple occasions, we would get eight schools together and eight schools have eight data points that are different and discreet and instructive to each other. And some of the best learning that would happen is when you have four or five teachers on a grade level collaborating or you have seven or eight schools in a pod collaborating. Why on earth can we have three districts that already have an affinity and a love and some overlap? Heavens, there should be straightforward, right from the get-go, communicated, expressed, and dedicated. We will partner together. This doesn't have to be a rancorous thing. We will communicate. We will collaborate. We will work together. And those three districts can be just like three teachers on a grade level, three schools in a pod. And 100%, and as I was a principal, I had two schools and two of the three schools, it was me and my secretary. That was the leadership team for part of it. So Stephanie knows what this is like to be the only person you're building that kind of does what you do. And heavens, we should have the athletic director, you know, in the buildings talking to each other and the athletic directors in that district talk to the athletic directors in the other district. We should have that German teacher that may only have two or three other German teachers in the district talk with other German teachers in this district and that district. Who cares? Why do we need to create artificial boundaries? Your, call it professional learning community, doesn't have to be small. It can be as wide as who do you know? Who do you know? And let's make it, let's provide vehicles for our teachers, librarians, custodians, whoever, to visit and learn from each other.
The tri-state area, the tri-district area. This next question is also from a person that's here in this room tonight and I was excited when I read this because I just sat on a panel today talking about this very thing at Utah Valley University. Do you see the school board as the people's representatives elected to oversee the people's school system? Or do you have another view? How will this affect your work on the school board?
What I would say is I would go back to what kind of the very first paragraphs of public school in the state of Utah. It clearly says that parents are the primary, have the primary responsibility to educate their child. Now, should they choose to partner with a school, then let's partner together and then as a parent, I'm saying, "I want you. I need you. I hope that you will do an amazing job because I'm choosing to partner with a team." And that's right from how the state of Utah defines other education. Parents' primary responsibility, but most choose to get help. So is this the, I don't know what the right word would be as far as the people's district and the people's school, but yes, we need to listen to, respond to, rub shoulders with, talk with, get feedback from all of our stakeholders in this community. And that includes our professional teachers who in some cases and in most cases understand both sides of, "I've got kids in school and I teach our kids too," right? So to not give a lot of credence to the feedback So to not give a lot of credence to the, the feedback that our professionals give us. Uh, but yes, ultimately, we are responsible as a school board, as a school, as a teacher, down to the teacher, to work with those parents, listen and cooperate, work together to help their children succeed. So I don't know exactly what words I would use to describe that, but yes, we need to work closely and be subject to our, to the input and feedback and aspirations of our
That is a question that causes a little pause and a little time to think and reflect. We are elected by our public who pass above a certain amount of authority for the governance of this school district. So we do represent them and their interests. And I agree with Jason, the parents are the ultimate decision maker for their students. But I also feel that there are several pieces that come together under the purview of a school board that you are advocating for, you were, you were cheering for, you were hoping all of those pieces come together in a really effective, successful synergy. Um, on the Utah State Board Association website, um, it talks about basic belief statements. And it says, effective local school boards influence students' achievement when collaborating with parents, students and the education community. So I think we bring all of those pieces together and to make sure their voices are heard and represented, that none of the decisions the school board makes, is made solely on the perspective of one group, that we bring those three groups, the education community, our community. I feel strongly that more needs to be done, um, so that the community feels like it's their school district. Um, knocking doors and people say, well, I don't have any kids in school. And I'm gonna say, but it's your school district, it's your community. So while I do believe we are elected and we represent that voice, we have a little bit broader responsibility to represent students, parents, community and our educators.
Thank you. Trisha, what time do you want us to end?
Let's go to five till.
Taking monitoring. Okay. Um, knocking on doors, always fun. So let's talk about some hot topics, can we? I would imagine that the two of you have heard, as you've been out campaigning, uh, some constituents' concerns perhaps about what might happen in schools or what could happen in classrooms as you've been on the campaign trail. Whether it's AI, sensitive materials, political perspectives of teachers or other hot topics. How as one member of the board, would you go about addressing these expressed concerns?
Well, first I would say, as one member of the board, I really have very little influence. The school board is structured so that it is a body of seven and that we communicate work together and build consensus. And there are a lot of these topics that a diverse school board may not agree on completely. They might not all be in sync, but their job is to come together, build a consensus, get behind that decision and, and then, um, communicate that to teachers, students, constituents through good policy. And so I have a lot of experience of this recently. I was the coordinator of school libraries for Alpine School District when we went through the process of sensitive materials and it continues to date. I don't know how many of you recently saw, there was a recent audit of school libraries, um, the, the, the back and forth and the lack of agreement continues. But it was a very difficult time and we had parents on very different sides of the issues as well as educators and administrators. But I think we did a good job in Alpine School District of coming together, coming up with a policy. I was able to put forward that we identified 50 books in the district that needed to be, um, vetted. We put together 50 committees so that everybody had the ability to go through a book review process. I was really keen on that because I felt like it built capacity. So I think the keys in that situation were, we were presented with a difficult situation. There was a lack of agreement. We came up with a process to go through it and it allowed parents to be involved and community input to ultimately lead us to the right decision. I really believe when we talk to parents and teachers, we'll get to the right decision.
I think even just tonight, as I've been visiting with some, some of you, it's very similar words left my mouth, this is one of the great things about a board, is there's seven people and seven reasonable adults or even five, right? Four reasonable adults, right? Get a quorum, but if you, but you get seven reasonable adults together. You tackle, you look, scrutinize from various angles. What feedback have you gotten from your constituents, be they parents or teachers? What feedback have you got? What feedback have you gotten? And then seven people kind of put their heads together and see what we can come up with. Offer it, you know, put it out there, get feedback, refine it and tweak it and see what you finally settle on. Um, I think that's one of the, that's the power of collaboration. That's what we want our teachers to do. That's what we want moms and dads to do. That's what we want kids to do on the playground, let's talk about it, sort it out, rock, paper, scissors if you have to, and then let's move on and see what the results do and then refine and revisit and move forward. Um, so that's actually one thing I'm, I'm looking forward to is to have that collegial, um, conversations with other board members to kind of, to come together and see where, you know, good direction to move forward. Um, one of the things that I would just add is that the state, sometimes they provide helpful legislation. Sometimes they don't, but sometimes they have. And as a school board, we will be tasked with following, making sure, that's literally one of the several things that a school board is, is required to do is to ensure that your school is following state guidelines and policy. Now, that doesn't mean we can't advocate for something better, but in the meantime, that will be our duty is to uphold those guidelines and recommendations while advocating for maybe something a little better.
Thank you. Uh, this one was submitted also by someone, I'm, I'm totaling back and forth from the compilation from the online submitted questions of the folks that are here tonight. This one is from someone here tonight. Uh, what do you think about the no phones initiatives in schools? What would you like to see policy-wise moving forward?
I'm all in favor of the no phones. Now, I've seen various schools do that differently. Some schools allow it in the hallways at lunch. Some schools say no, it goes into your, the little magnet bag and you can only open it up at the end of the day. So there, there's a, there's not a one-size-fits-all for how that does, but in, in principle or philosophy, yeah, I, I, I want kids thinking about tasks and their classmates and problem solving and, uh, working together and gain resilience, attention, focus. And cell phones make that difficult. We all know it. We all know it in our own personal lives. Right? And so yes, I'm in favor of, of that in principle, exactly how it looks. That'll be, you know, does the district decide to say one-size-fits-all? Okay, well, it better be a good size. Or is there some kind of, these are the, the, the four or five guiding principles and we allow each school to kind of tailor it to what their school community council thinks? What is their PT, what input does the PTA give? What are, what are their teachers seeing? Are the teachers seeing, well, actually, there are times where I want them to get out their cellphone because some of the activities we do, we want them to go out and find real type information and assimilate it and compile it. And there's some things you can do in the state that, there are times where cell phones can be a useful tool, but just, just a distractor, no. A tool, perhaps, but yeah, there will definitely be discussions about that. But yes, in principle, no cell phones during class, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I am on board as well. I believe there's a time and place and that the legislation is well suited to helping us, um, the students' academic achievement, uh, their mental and emotional wellbeing as well. So I would advocate. I know though, that we don't have 100% consensus in our communities or our schools. So I do think there needs to be some work done to help, um, build some consensus around that because there's nothing worse for a teacher than having a student have a phone in the classroom and it's supposed to be put away, but they want to trump your authority because mom said she was gonna text me that I have a dentist appointment in 15 minutes and I need to be sure I'm, I'm ready to be checked out. So I think there can be a little angst between the policy and, and the support that it, that it is receiving. So I am totally in favor of the policy. I think we need to, um, do a little work around building it. And if I'm really 100% honest, one thing I'm not sure I understand is why schools have to pay for the cases to protect them. I, I need to have a conversation maybe with someone that's boots on the ground or, or facing this right now. Cause I have seen schools spending so much time and money investigating, um, the cases, the students will put their phones in to protect them while, while they're in class. The phones that were a distraction and were, I, I don't know. So I, I still have some questions, I, I guess, about how, how we're sharing my mess. But I do believe less phones will be beneficial for students.
Thank you. Is mental health an issue for our students and the adults who serve them? What steps would you take to support the mental and emotional health of students and staff, if any?
Um, yes, I think this is a real issue in our schools. I think we have seen an uptick in, in students and faculty members since COVID who deal with things like anxiety and some of those mental issues that can make it really difficult on a day-to-day basis. Some of the action steps I would like to see taken if we can afford a full-time counselor in each of our elementaries. I would love to be able to staff, um, our elementaries with, with those. Um, there's lots of student programs at the secondary level that the Hope Squad or peer-to-peer kind of activities that I think can help bolster students and help them. And I want to give a shout out to Lacy tonight. Lacy came to one of my cookies and conversations in the bar event and I didn't know Lacy before that, but I have been so impressed with the program they have here at Shelley Elementary. Lacy runs the wellness room here at Shelley Elementary. And I think one room for a child and a teacher to have a place where you can go for a few minutes to just regroup, to breathe. And as we were talking about how they funded that or how, how do we, how do we do that? Um, they were able to set the room up with a grant and then Lacy was, um, creating and contacted BYU and doing internship program with, um, if I'm getting this right, social workers, psychology students. And I was here at the school the other day and I was able to go down and to see the room in action, see some of the BYU students here. So I think it is a real phenomenon. I think we will, um, do a service to our students if we factor that into their day and give them a time and place that they can just breathe for a minute.
Well said. Um, a couple, I don't know if, I don't disagree with anything that Stephanie shared there. Um, a couple of thoughts that I had is currently the district's in the, in the, and when I was, uh, a director of student services in my department was helping pilot this, but the, every school has option to take what's called a culture, climate and connection survey. And that is trying to assess where should, how, do they feel connected to other people in school? What's the climate like at my school? Do I feel safe? If I don't, what are, what are those things, what are those obstacles, what are those triggers that are? So this culture, climate and connection survey, I think, as we refine it and glean data from that, I think that can then help a school say, all right, in this school, we don't need a, we don't need a, um, counselor, we need a social worker. In this school, we need a social worker halftime and a school psychologist halftime. So at some, in, in some way, shape or form, kind of like Stephanie was saying, some, some level of funding is school. Here's your level of funding for these, we call them related servers, right? These school psychologists, school counselors, school social workers, nurses. Here's your, your nugget. Use your culture, climate and connection survey. Use your parent feedback, use your teacher feedback to say, I'll be better served with one full-time this or a half-time this and a half-time that based on our current needs. Let's use data. We're gathering some, let's use it to help us refine those decisions. So each school can kind of say, at this school, this will, would help us meet those social emotional needs of our students and their struggle. So as those hierarchy of needs says, you have a hard time up here, you know, making sense of all the abstract thoughts out there in the world, if your, your brain is down here thinking about, I'm hungry, my parents are fighting, all kinds of things that anxiety, depression, so we need to take steps to certainly address it.
I love this next question so much, no pressure. But project 10 years into the future, what would the new school district have accomplished? And what will it be known for?
That is a good question. Um, my answer might be a little bit different than you would have anticipated. 10 years from now, I would like to see three amazing districts. That's the honest to goodness truth. I hope, I hope Aspen Peaks is leading the way and we're doing amazing things for the, the youth and the teachers and the, the people, the employees about the school district, or Aspen Peaks at that point. But I would, my dream would be to see three amazing school districts because of how we've grown together, we've worked together, we've shared resources and information and data collaboration. So that's kind of a bigger picture now to, to, to go to Aspen Peaks in, in particular. What I would hope to see is that we have teachers that love coming to work. And because our teachers love coming to work, they connect with, they engage, they motivate, they encourage the kids because when kids feel attached to school and they, this is a, this is where I want to be. I like coming to school. This is a great place. When kids are attached to something in school, they attend it. And when they attend it, we can teach them. Right? When they're able to be fully present because they love coming to school, we will teach them good things. We will have good educators that love their craft, that work hard, that collaborate, that refine and improve. So 10 years from now, what I would hope that we see is kids love coming to school and teachers love working. And if that happens, they'll excel.
10 years from now, I had a crystal ball. I would love to see a school district that is known not only throughout Utah, but the country for academic achievement and innovation. And that looks like teachers who have the supports to collaborate, to experiment, to touch their students' lives. That means students are engaged and they're benefiting from that development and, um, collaboration that their teachers share with one another. And it's a district that's not afraid to try new things. We try something new so that we can live within our budget, so that we can do more with less and that we can find new ways to make sure our students are achieving at the highest level.
Thank you. Please take 90 seconds. Oh, could we say it was gonna start? Jason was gonna start this one. Uh, go ahead and make a closing statement addressing anything you didn't get to say or something you want to emphasize. This is your 90 second closing statement.
First of all, thanks for coming. So neat to have, and, and we've grown as, uh, the night's gone on. So thank you for coming and sharing a little time with us. I'd, I'd say there's probably two things that I want to highlight. Um, having been a teacher, assistant principal, principal, district administrator and now a university faculty member, again, I've kind of seen three, age three through 22. And, and not only from a grandeur, like kid by kid as a teacher, but in a systems level. I've been in hundreds of IP's with parents that are, that are mourning a struggling student. I've been in hundreds of 504s with parents who are worried about, and is my child gonna be safe at school? Can you take care of my child with this condition? I've conducted threat assessments and gone into the homes of students who not only make the threat, but receive the threat and, and worked together to sort that out so both can move forward and succeed. I've been in dozens and dozens of PTA meetings, school community council meetings, putting together trust management plans. So I guess what I'm saying is, not only in depth, but in breadth, I have a lot of experience that, well, I think will help me understand. I have a lot of experience that will, I think, will help me understand from a connection level, how all of those things touch each other in that depth and in that breadth. And then finally, there's a good people that think that too. And that's why Mayor Frost and Superintendent Farnsworth and Sarah Beeson and others have endorsed me because they can kind of see that, I bring that experience and understand. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for engaging. I think there are two wonderful candidates sitting before you and I hope you will take this decision seriously. Talk to your friends, vote. But I think some of the things that distinguish me is that I have an active interest in my grandchildren that will be in the new district. I also have worked at every level of education. I have taught pre-service teachers. My administrative experience is different than Jason's. My administrative experience focused probably more on mentoring and coaching and building capacity in our teachers and our teacher librarians. I have worked with budgets. I have taught librarians how to prepare a budget, how to talk to a principal when they are intimidated. But I have experience working with every school in Alpine School District. My experience is broader than education. I have a lot of years in education. I just worked a really long time. But I have broader experience than just education. I spent 10 years working for a software company, learning to listen to someone's needs, analyzing the needs, and coming up with a solution. I believe that will serve me well. I want to express my appreciation to everyone who made this evening possible, the PTA, Cindy for moderating, but I really want to thank my family. I don't get emotional. I couldn't do it without them. They are my biggest cheerleaders. But I want everyone to know my gratitude for the American Fork community and for this opportunity. Sorry, I'm going to go over one second. My tagline has been "All in for American Peaks." So I invite you to join me in this effort.
Now, finally. Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us tonight. Thank you especially just for being willing to run. It's a big move, but it's not easy. And we all are grateful and up here, we are grateful for all of you for coming. So thanks for spending your evening with us. And I think we're done.
We did it.
We did it.